Number six ninety-four, how wonderful is that? And on this um holy holiday, it's especially nice to see all of you. And welcome you to a celebration. And I thought, why don't we do a celebration? So, what is our celebration? Our celebration is that we will invite each and every one of you to address the group today. So no seven minutes, anybody and everybody, in fact, everybody can contribute. Now you cannot put colors on us, but you can definitely lend us your voice, you know, and say something colorful to us. And to start that colorful uh sharing, I'm going to invite Vetriwell. Vetriwell, about some colorful sharing, and we'll take it turn by turn. So start with you Vetriwell, pass it on to the next person, and the next person will pass it on to the next person, and the next person will pass it on to the next person. And that way, we will have all people on this call to say something, share something. That's a good way to contribute, isn't it?
Amazing, yes sir. Thank you very much for this and thanks for giving me this opportunity. All I want to say is, we study the great thing, I am power, I am creativity, I am awareness, I am control, I am money. And it is true also, but who is not believing it's only me? So if I start believing it, life will start to so in a very colorful way, sir. Over to, over to ready, sir.
I continue the same thing, sir. I believe, if you believe yourself, then uh the light will be happy and you'll have a beautiful life and joy and glory, sir. Start believing yourself.
Okay, pass it on to the next person.
Niti ma'am.
Yes, sir. I was still struggling with the background. We uh, we come here with an open mind and we accept what uh is shared with us over here. And it opens a lot of new doors that we did not know that existed for us. And the more open we are through this conversation, in receiving and in giving out our, our expressions and our experiences, the more we grow and the more we help others grow as well. So um being open to receive and being open to give and being open to share is the main thing that I would like to emphasize on today. It helps my individual self as well as everybody else. So all the best. Over to you, Shakti.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, everyone. Yeah, for me is the magic mantra, all of life comes to me with ease, joy and glory. So everyone should have a life of ease and joy and glory. Your attitude uh towards your life is so important. It's not about what happened to you. The attitude is so important. Have a great attitude towards your life. Yeah, thank you so much. Then I can pass to Prem, sir.
Unmute kare, Premji. Newt hai aapka, unmute kare pahle. Are you awake, sir, Mary?
Yes. Uh, today is Holi, Holi day. So me aaj Holi pe bhot huwa, hota jo din hai na jo, ye sabse bhi hota hai ek saal ke, ye hota hai ki khutam karne ka. Jisse hum pura saal ladai kar tere na, kisi se bhi persa, aadi dil se, dil se milte hain, to humara prarar, jisse bhi ladai hoti, sab khutam ho gaya, dobara nay se shuru ho gaya, humara khushi de milne ka. Ye Holi ka diya, God ne bhot acha din diya hume, sab toto se pyaar bana le. Jinsa ladai hai, unse hum dil se hum milte hain, karla lagana baad se nahi hota, dil se hum karla lagate, sab member ko. Aaj Holi hai, to Holi pe me sabko mukhabar mila chal.
Thank you, thank you. Agle aadmi ka naam lijiye, jo bolega.
Kamal ji.
Good morning, good morning all.
Good morning.
Okay, something worth to say on Holi. So today is a festival of color. And luckily, uh like God has gifted some talent to have uh some kind of creativity in me. So you know, I relate those colors with me, you know. And you may have heard that what, what happened if the colors are not in our life. So I started my art journey during the pandemic only and during that time I you know started slowly and gradually and got to know that you know, art can really bring positive change in you, the colors can really bring a, bring a, you know, very good change in your life better, you know. Really distress you, it inspire you, aap recharge ho jaate ho. So when you want to feel better, just pick up brush or do something, you know, something creative for yourself. Because it shift your focus away, you know. If you have any kind of illness, mental health or depression, you start creating something and you know, sab chumantar ho jayega. So I'll request you to know, to ignite that power of creativity in you, you know, we always said that we have to be in creation mode. So start and you know, open your heart and you, you feed your mind and it will change your entire life. So bring that colors in your life and I wish you all happy Holi. Thank you. Oh, okay, I'll, I'll request Kuldeepi to come and share.
You have to unmute first. Yes. You are unmuted. Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, friends. I feel that a little change in the paradigm that life is happening to us to, we are creating our life. If this changes, I feel a little change, little change like this can change our life forever. Because in every moment, we are in create mode, life will be that which we like.
Hmm.
Thank you.
You have to point to the next person.
Kamalji is there?
Who?
Kamal, Kamalji. I'm not able to see.
No, I already spoke.
He was the one who spoke just now.
Ah, I have Kamalji.
Doesn't matter, I will handle it. Okay, let's have Priya. The rest of you can mute yourself. Yeah, Priya?
Yes, sir. Hello, everyone. Happy Holi. And I would like to say that every experience is an opportunity to become a better person. It is a win situation or a learning. So I'm following this and I'm learning a lot these days.
Wonderful, wonderful. Kasa. Uh, Kasa, uh please speak.
You know, on, on this colorful day, that we can create our life in a more colorful way as a creator. Hello.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Can I have a hug?
Yes.
Hello.
We can hear you, Kasa.
Uh, as, as a creator, we can create this life with more colors. We can paint our life in whatever color that we desire. Happy Holi. And one of my favorite tool is everything is opposite of what it appears to be. Nothing is opposite of what it appears to be. And I pass it on to Hasina ji.
All right, Hasina ji.
Yeah, good morning. I'm sorry I cannot come on the video because I'm lying down and not feeling too well.
Hmm.
Uh, hmm, what I've got here is um. I'm just lost for words.
Doesn't matter, say anything you want. You can say I love you all, I bless you all.
Happy Holi to everybody. I believe that Holi is the time when you forgive and forget. Forgive everybody and forget whatever past has happened unpleasant. That's what I'd like to share.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. And you can point to the next person.
Hmm, Ashok ji.
Ashok ji, yes, Ashok ji, go ahead.
Good, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I was trying to put, put that background, but uh I am not able to do, to do that.
Hmm.
I will learn. Uh, coming back. It's similar, something similar to Hasina ji. Yesterday was so much enjoyment, excitement of all age groups. And in our society, we are about eighty of us. And hundred and fifty or hundred and sixty of us spent right from breakfast to four o'clock together. It was such a wonderful experience. And what EMC told or taught, what else is possible was so exciting that unbelievable. And as Hasina said, today the mind is so calm, quiet and peaceful that even to, it refuses to think. It is so, so peaceful, unbelievably peaceful. So what else is possible has been the solution for me all this time. And empowering morning conversation has helped in finding many, many alternative solutions which are one superior to the other one. And when you find the second solution, you find, oh, this also is possible, this also is possible, it's beautiful, it's beautiful. Thanks to everybody and wish you all the best in coming year. Thank you.
Yeah, so who's the next person? You'll have to say.
Sujag, you know?
Yeah, okay, Sujag, we know, Sujag, we know this is the next person. Sujag, go ahead. Okay, Sujag doesn't seem to be there. Let's, let it be Rama.
Good, good morning, good morning, sir.
Morning, morning.
Uh, while we are trying to be colorful with our judgments, the color which can come is only shade of black's belly. When we are in judgment, the only color we can see is the black. If you want to be colorful really, we need to move to allowance. That's what we are trying to do here in EMC. So to get ease, joy and glory in our life, let's move from judgment to allowance. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, you may point to the next person.
Um, uh Captain Santil.
All right, Santil, go ahead.
Yeah, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Is it about yesterday's experience?
No, you can say anything you want.
Oh, okay. So I would like to share yesterday's experience. Yesterday I went, it was quite a eventful day. I worked out some activities and I was full of joy. I don't know why yesterday we, yesterday our session also helped, when our Sukhdev sir said about that, you know, reliving that pain which you went through and releasing them. I think probably that did the trick. So yesterday was full day, it was energetic. Yeah, thank you, sir, for that. And yesterday, the whole day was energetic in the office. I had two, three meetings. I had a public gathering. We are celebrating safety week. So I was telling people about what is the importance of putting the helmet and especially this strap and all that. So it was a, I myself was very proud in the evening. I said, okay, it was a useful day, you know. Thank you very much. And that's the reason today again I'm here. And I wish I, every day, you know, can do like that.
Thank you, thank you. Santil, what is my name?
Sukhdev Malvai, right?
Read what is written over there. Is it Sukhdev or Sukhdev?
Sorry, sorry, Sukhdevak Malvai.
Okay, so don't call me Sukhdev. Thank you. Okay, who's the next person? You point to the next person and they'll.
Yeah, let me see. Do I join in between? I don't know if, how well I've been covered, yeah.
Okay, doesn't matter. I will, I will point. Um, okay, Vandana.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much Sukhdevak sir for helping us learn and transform our life. And I wish you all a very happy Holi. May the colors of Holi fill your relationships with brightness and colors of joy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And who else? Sahu saam.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. Happy Holi to all of you. I'm audible, sir?
Yes.
Us like colors, red, green, yellow, all the colors, life is like that. So you have to appreciate the colors and the symbols, yes sir. So for me, if we cannot change the world, we should change ourselves, how to receive, how to react, how to respond. So whatever in your control, control yourself. Don't try to control the world. Whatever you can control, you control it and live in a peace life from Delhi to EMC, your life will be amazing. There, sir. Happy Holi, sir.
Happy Holi. Thank you very much. And Vipenji.
Good morning, everyone. And I would say radiance of colors from you. You should radiate colors with your behaviors. Your aura should radiate good colors uh to all of around you. And creativity and coolness and all those colors of life should, you should radiate positively. And in return, you will release, when you release these colors, you will receive the similar colors to yourself also. So in, instead of practical colors, radiate colors from yourself to others. And I will end up by, Holi ke din dil khil jaate hain, rangon me rang mil jaate hain. Gil shikwe, gil shikwe, hum sabhi bhul ke, dushman bhi galen mil jaate hain. Holi ke din dil khil jaate hain, rangon me rang mil jaate hain.
Kya wata hai? Vipenji, you are reading my mind or what? I was thinking, kisi ko ye gaana gaana chahiye. All right, Major saab, Narayanan saab.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, good morning.
Sir, man is always born with color, he leaves with color. He is always, everybody is a colorful personality. And each color represents different aspects of life. Like pink for zest, red for life, orange for health, yellow for sun, green for nature, blue for art, the vast expanse, and indigo for harmony and violet for spirit. So while all these colors signify different aspects of life, our EMC always signify the zest for living and elements acceptance, the thin line between choice and decision and ultimately resulting in a life of peace, joy and glory, sir. Thank you to your team.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And very colorful personality who symbolizes Holi is Mr. Venkatesh. So over to you, Venkateshji, the most colorful person.
Happy Holi to all. In where I live, Karnataka, it is not that famous. I mean, sir, that not celebrated in that large scale or by everybody and all. But we have people here in societies and all, they have their Holi. Holi, I feel from childhood, is a very colorful festival. And philosophically speaking, white is the symbol of peace. And white is the color for all peace and everything, but when dispersed, it gives seven colors. And these seven colors forms all hundreds of colors. Means we have in white, in peace, a mixture of all colors. So uh this and black is the one which is totally opposite, which doesn't give out any color. Like that. So let us be like white and when uh we talk about Holi, we see people playing Holi and all, you feel like taking out your mobile and clicking their faces. They are so colorful, whether it is a child or a old woman or the village rustic, like the coolie people and all. They all enjoy Holi like anything. And the best part is they get immersed in colors so much that they take at least an hour to wash themselves. They have to use oil, other things and steaming boil, boiling water to get rid of the color. To run to it, not a dull, but a good one, to do not both, much kill. So let us, let us all be immersed in colors. This EMC group is very colorful. We have different people here. And in movies, not only this, particularly this song Holi ke din. This was shot at Ramnagar for days together with the highest tech technology, which made this song so memorable over the years. And just imagine the scene of Sholay, where immediately after this Holi song, you got a classic scene of the uh, the dakuks coming into the village and fighting. It was so well pictured. This was done for months. The Holi was celebrated there for months to shoot. And that became ever. And another one is there like in Silsila, you have another song by Amitabh Bachchan Hossan, that has also become very, very famous. I love to listen to those songs, few songs. And if the entire movie is not colorful, they would have put one Holi song in it to make it colorful. So let us have Holis in life. Let's all enjoy. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you very much. And Arvind. We've got two people left out, Arvind and Atul, both with the yes. One is visible, the other one is not visible. Arvind, 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 good morning. We are waiting for you to speak. Okay, never mind. So let's have Atul. Atul is very fond of speaking, so you will hear a lot of stuff.
So I came in late. What's the topic? We're supposed to speak about Holi, right?
No, you can speak about anything. You can speak about EMC, what you're getting out of it, you can speak about Holi, you can speak about the unholy, anything, whatever you want.
Yeah. Yeah, so yesterday's session was really profound. And uh we started from the toe and went right up to the head, to the crown. And what I realized was, there are so small things that we hold on to. Like a very hurt. So when Major Saab, he was speaking yesterday, he said that practically every part of his life, there is a story that which is there. Ten of his toes, uh, the, those were hurt, knee, the every bone. So the moment we released that, so similarly what the emotions which I got yesterday was, after the, that exercise, I was in a very, very fragile state for a couple of hours. And I'm sure a new Atul was created as a part of that exercise. This is what EMC has been doing, rejuvenating. That is, that is the experience that I'm getting every time I'm there for the EMC.
Hmm, very nice.
And that is what the festival of Holi also does. It rejuvenates us. So we're able to experience color, we're able to experience fragrance. And we more on top of it, we're able to experience being one with somebody else. Every person around us, we're, we're friends with them. That's the beauty of EMC, that's the beauty of the festival of Holi. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you.
People for being that light and color.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Arvind. Last chance for you to speak. Okay. So what do you want to speak about today? So we have a lot of profound people here today and we can ask them to speak. What happened to our good friend Rama? He just said, he spoke and he disappeared. Rama, are you still there? Why have you gone? Can you see him, anybody? No, he's there. Hello, Rama. I can see that you are there. Why don't you address the group today? You can talk to them about anything that's very close to your heart. Okay, so while he is getting ready to come to the camera, anybody else? How about you, Niti? See, I'm, today, you know what I actually want to say to you all is that each and every one of us is a reservoir of knowledge, of insights, of realizations and wisdom. And there is so much we can share with people, you know, not like advice, not like opinion. Advice, opinion is no use, you know. I have opinion about the sun and the moon and political situation in the country and blah, blah, blah. That's of no use to anybody. But you can certainly, you also have a lot of insights and realizations. You know, and what you have learned through your experiences in life. So empowering morning conversations is also an opportunity for you to share those realizations. Sometimes those realizations may have made certain conclusions in your life, which make you get stuck. So we will unstick you from that. Sometimes those realizations are offering profound revelations to others also, okay? So don't be shy to share them. I learned long time back when I was trained to be a trainer. They said anything anybody says makes a difference. And anything anybody says can be used to show people possibilities. Anything anybody says can be used to add learning to the group, yeah? So please start relating to yourself as this wonderful, magnificent, extraordinary, infinite being that we are. And the infinite being has infinite knowledge, okay? So you know what happens? Survival concerns will not allow us to speak, like we are shy. Am I saying the right thing? Will people listen to me? Will people agree with me? Will people laugh at me, blah, blah, blah? Yeah, so don't worry about all that. Okay, Captain Saab, you can go first.
Yeah, I want to, I want to share exactly what the point which you are talking about. Uh, yesterday evening, I had attended one program. Uh, it is about, uh, you know, Tamil epic or you can say very old literature, okay? So that speaker was a very young lady. She was around, she must be around thirty-five, thirty-two or so. And the audience, most of them were above sixty, okay, sixty to eighty. And she spoke so well about that epic which was written some two thousand years back. Major Narayan will be knowing that. I don't know. Narayan sir, when was this Agananuru written? Any idea?
Two thousand years back. So it's a part of some literature, average is between two thousand and two thousand five hundred years old.
Yeah, so yesterday this lady talked about Agananuru, which is about four hundred songs. Nanuru means four hundred. So she spoke for almost forty minutes and the best part is when that event got over, when we were all getting down, exactly the same what our Sukhdevak was just telling. One old man, he must be around eighty, eighty-five, sir, he was telling, I've read so many times books and you know, so many big books, but when you listen to someone, the same thing when they explain it in their, you know, their perception or their way of putting it across in words, it was so easy to comprehend. So I think exactly, yesterday evening I heard this thought and again you have, you have just reinforced the same thought. And great, I think, yeah, when we listen to people, when we listen good thoughts, it, I think it raises faster, I guess. And another small joke she told, I would like to share that in this. It's sort of, yeah, so what happens? One guy, uh, he gets, you know, he takes ten thousand rupees from his friend, okay? And long time he just acts, he has forgotten and he's not, you know, giving that money back. So the other guy thinks, uh, he waits for two years, three years and then he said, now there is no this thing, you know, this guy is not going to give me. So let me go and ask him shamelessly. So he goes and says like, you have taken ten thousand from me, do you have any idea of giving it back or not? Okay, so that guy says, okay, come to my house. So this way goes to a lot of force. Chalo, aaj he will give me, you know, the ten thousand bucks. So when he goes to his house, he takes him to the rear of his house into the garden and he shows one tambourine seat, okay? He shows to his friend one tambourine seat, he digs a hole and puts the tambourine seat and closes it. And then he says, once this seat becomes a plant and then a tambourine tree, and once it starts giving fruits, I'll harvest and then I'll settle you a ten thousand rupees, okay? So the other. So the other guy says, he thought this guy has gone crazy, you know, he laughs. Then that guy says, see, you are so happy that you are going to get back your money, so you are happy. But look at me, I am so sad, I need to take care of this tree for so many years and then give back that money. Okay, so, thank you.
Hmm, very interesting. Thank you very much. Yes, Vipenji.
It is about my experience of consistency. And in Japanese they say, genchu kebitzu. In general verse we say, if there is a problem, be in it to win it. So I will share that I was designing a launch rod for my defense customer and there is a last date of delivery and I was fighting with some issue which was not solvable at that day and next day was the last day to deliver. So two, three days were pending and everybody around me left me. Sir, it is not going to happen, we are going to lose. So I was alone with the problem inside my room. Tomorrow morning we have to deliver and today night is around eleven o'clock. I have only one principle, I don't leave. So I was there and eleven o'clock in the, in the night, I got an idea how to solve it. It was solved, twelve o'clock I called them up, let us pack it and deliver it. So I am so strong believer of the principle, be in it to win it, not leave the problem.
Beautiful, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Finally, Rama has appeared, so we will ask him.
Thank you, sir. So today I would like to talk about uncertainty. So all of us, most of us would like to be certain about what's going to happen to us. And that's why many of us get into anxiety and fear, what will happen in future? Will I be safe? Will my family be safe? All those things. But the world is designed not for certainty. It is inherently the world and the universe is uncertain. And that is specifically designed such a way that it is very creatively designed. That instead of anxiety and fear and worry, we could be more curious, explorative and inclusive. Right? Because when we start doing things, when we live our life, many things can happen. So we always get worried in default mode that only bad things will happen, but actually great things can happen. So it depends on our mindset. So that's, that's why the uncertainty is inbuilt. So even at the quantum level, science, science clearly explains that at subatomic, subatomic level, the world is uncertain. You cannot determine the simple, the distance or the, the location of the particle as well as the velocity or the momentum of the particle together. You can only determine only one of them. So inherently the world is designed to be uncertain and it is for good, it is for creativity, it is for exploratory purpose. So if we can understand this, not only from the science perspective, even practically in our own experience on a day-to-day basis. Instead of keep worrying about a certain thing, if we can take it up as a curious thing and explorative thing and handle it accordingly. We will be enjoying the life much more than worrying about it. I, I do have some experiences, so both the ways, worrying as well as curious. But it is very clear that we can move from fear and anxiety and worry to curious and active and positiveness. So I also want to do was clearing, access clearing on this before I close. So all the fear, anxiety, resistance and mind fog associated with triggered by uncertainty. Will you uncreate, delete, destroy and across all time, space and dimensions now please? Yes, right, wrong, good and bad, forward and backward, all nine shots, boys, forwards and beyonds. All the desperation for certainty, control, predictability in order to feel safe. Will you uncreate, delete and destroy across all time, space and dimensions now please?
Yes.
Right and wrong, good and bad, forward and backward, all nine shots, boys and forwards, beyonds. Thank you. So let's move from no fear and anxiety to curiosity and positiveness with respect to uncertainty. Uncertainty is good, that there is a creativity involved in it, we can change it to the way we want. Instead of just keep worrying about that it has to be in a particular way. So we have the power and choice to shape the things and the events in a much more colorful way if there is uncertainty. So let's appreciate that. Thank you all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And you know something more than also, he said, if we are curious. Right? We can stop worrying. If we are curious, we can even stop judging. Because all the judging, see, brain number two is only meant to make sure that we are safe. Okay? And brain number two only wants to make sure that things remain the same because we feel safe in that. Okay? So when we replace it with curiosity, looking for newness, what else is possible? Where is the need to judge? Then we can look at every situation and be curious about it. Okay? So what is there for me to learn in this? Beautiful. Thank you so much, Rama, for that. So before we close the session today, I will obviously ask our shires, we've got two shires, right? And we will start with the elder one, Kamalji. Sorry, Guldeepji. How better to close today's session than to have some sharing from you, sir?
Sir, do, do line. Khaten ki achche karne kare aur zikr na kare. Achche ka, achche karne kare aur zikr na kare, rab ka shukr kare aur fikr na.
Wow.
Means do good work but don't publicize. Be grateful to God and don't worry.
Beautiful. And we are grateful for your words, Guldeepji.
Thank you, sir.
Kamalji.
Yes, sir. Share yeh hai ki jeene ke har tarah se tamanna hasin hai. Jeene ke har tarah se tamanna hasin hai. Har shar ke baagruddi ye dunia hasin hai. Shar means ladai. Har shar ke baagruddi ye dunia hasin hai.
Wonderful. So can you translate it?
Aapne kaitha issue ho jata hai. Jeene, jeene ke har tarah se tamanna hasin hai. Like I want to live the life fully, you know, that is my desire to live, live life fully.
In every possible way.
Yeah. Har shar ke baagruddi ye dunia hasin hai. Despite of each struggle and you know, every fight, the world is beautiful, still beautiful.
Yeah, so that's a very nice way to end the day. The world is still beautiful despite all the effort and struggle. Right? And we are the EMC and, and for us, the life comes to us with ease, joy and glory. All of life comes to us with ease, joy and glory. And just remember, this clearing, we'll do it one more time. What energy, space and consciousness can I be that would allow me, to adore me, to appreciate me and to love myself and to love the wonderful, magnificent, extraordinary human being that I am? Right and wrong, good and bad, forward and backward, all nine shots, boys, who has and beyond. So have a great day, have a fun day. And we will see you tomorrow morning for another session. And please remember what Vetri will say. Please do share, you know, about your experiences. You can share the posts, you can share. And he had given you a demonstration of what you can do on LinkedIn, so maybe we can all go for it. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Bye-bye. God bless you.
Alright, sir. Thank you, sir.
Bye.
Happy Holi to all.